All right, well, good afternoon, everybody. Glad to see everyone here. The first thing, the first thing we have is to ask Commissioner Victor Leal to lead us in an invocation.
So if y'all will join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. We ask that you allow us to impart wisdom upon us to be able to conduct the matters of the city, Lord. Or just to continue lifting up of our employees, of people that are around us, Lord, continue to protect us from COVID and for those that have been affected, Lord, just give them peace in their lives, allow them full healing, healing. And for those of us who've missed somebody in our lives, Lord, just that we can continue on and that the families around can can find ways to heal. Lord, we just continue to offer our day up to you. We ask that you watch over us and that you guide us. In Jesus Christ, holy name, we pray. Amen.
All right, well, thank you. If you will now join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. I formally called the regular meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And welcome, everyone. We're glad to have you all here. Welcome to those who are listening in to our our virtual City Commission meeting presented by Zoom and being broadcast online through our our website. We appreciate your participation and we look forward to it later in this meeting. First item on the agenda is the proclamation honoring Reeds of America, the Reeds of America program. And I believe, do we have Sal Carmona here with us tonight at the meeting?
We do, Mayor. Dave, you want to let Sal video come back on?
Sal and I believe there's one other member of their group. If Sal wants to introduce any other members of the group that are and organizers.
Yes, I have. I have Nor Holmes with us and her husband, John.
Well, welcome. Thank you all for sponsoring this event every year. It's great. The proclamation, whereas a Reeds of America Day will be held for the third time in Harlingen as an undertaking of the Veterans Memorial Project Committee and our advisory board and the city of Harlingen, joining the endeavor to organize, educate, and participate in the ceremonies being held at cemeteries throughout the nation in other locations in all 50 states and overseas. And whereas the local area cemetery shall conduct a ceremony presenting the national observance and will be held following the opening ceremony at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, September 19th. If I could ask you all to mute mute your lines. Thank you. So Saturday, the 19th of September, 2020, at the Veterans Memorial Eldon Park, Harlingen, Texas. And whereas this will become an annual event occurring each December as a Veterans Outreach Program to remind people of how important it is to remember the fallen, honor those who serve, teach our children the value of freedom. And whereas Reeds Across America is a national nonprofit organization founded in 2007 with a mission to remember, honor, and teach, and to continue to expand their annual reed laying ceremony first begun in Arlington National Cemetery by main businessman Morrell Warchester in 1992. And whereas the Reeds Across America Program and its local chapters spread their message about the importance of remembering following heroes, honoring those who serve and teaching our children about the sacrifices made by veterans and their families to preserve our freedoms. And whereas since 2008, Congress has issued a national proclamation officially recognizing WAA Day each December with a theme. And the theme for this year is be an American worth fighting for. Whereas this year's inspiration came from the keynote address made by Staff Sergeant Daniel Strong during a 2018 escort to Arlington National Cemetery during as an infantryman in the U.S. Marine Corps. He had lost 18 Marines during his service. Three were friends when he was Lance Corporal, Sixth Sister Squad Leader, and the remaining nine as their platoon sergeant. Each one impacted Sergeant Strong in a unique way as he witnessed firsthand what the true sacrifice was. Experienced the ripple effect it has on all involved. His message spoke clearly to the mission to remember, honor, and teach. These young men and women who are in Arlington and Normandy and other cemeteries have earned the right for you to be an American worth fighting for. Now therefore be it resolved that I, as Mayor Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, County of Cameron, do truly appreciate, along with the entire City Commission, the participation of the VMPC and the VAB and the national movement to teach all generations about the value of their freedom and the importance of honoring those who sacrificed so much to protect those freedoms with demonstrating to our veterans and their families that we shall not forget. We hereby proclaim Saturday, December 19th, 2020, is National Reeds Across America Day, and we encourage all Harlingen residents and residents of Cameron County to unite in celebrating National Reeds Across America Day. So this is a great, as I said before, this is a wonderful event for our community to help us continue to honor our veterans. Someone once said, every day should be Veterans Day. We should honor our veterans every day, and this is another opportunity for us to do that. Sal, do you have any, anything you want to tell us about the event?
Well, we are going to have a video for the city's Facebook. And we're going to have a ceremony, but it will be COVID protected. In other words, it'll be less than 10 people that are part of the ceremony. But it will happen, and mainly that right now we're at F Street Cemetery, and we have already marked the plots so that we can bring the reeds over here on Saturday after a short ceremony at Pelton Park. But we appreciate the support from the city. Every year they've been great with helping us honor the veterans that we have for the state.
All right. Well, thank you again for organizing that this year. Amanda, do we have any citizen communication?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Anyone? And it's Mr. Ron Losano, 2410.
Thank you, Sal.
Sal, could you mute your lines, Sal?
Would like to be called, Mayor. It's a topic of discussion is item 3A, legal cost. So I can go ahead and call him now with your permission.
Well, we can, we can. That's a consent agenda item. Yeah, go ahead and call him now. Thank you.
Hello?
Ron, this is Amanda. Ron, you asked to speak on item number 3A?
Yes, and as usual, the mayor serves his authority because he's in violation of the only statute that I cited there. But rather than to go into a topic that he's not prepared to discuss, we need to go off. Let me start out by saying we approach one of two sacred seasons of Christianity. Last night, a biblical passage I read concerned the crowd choosing Barabbas over Christ. Here, unlike Barabbas, who may not fully claim to moral virtue, Mr. Amaro does publicly doubt his adherence to Christianity. But recent events suggest we don't know when or how a thief strikes. And immediately on September 16th, a budget was adopted by Dan R. M. Z. requesting over half a million plus another 35,000 that they foresaw for other charities whose help they sought, like the sugar, I mean, like the sign cakes. Now, in the span of two months, they have purportedly incurred a cost overrun of $126,000 and seek redress. Barabbas didn't consider himself a thief, nor does Amaro, but greed is akin to cost overrun in this context. Now, if a stupid person misses by 20% at the onset of the fiscal year, they'll again feed at the top of below over 614,000 pretty soon. He plucks you apart taxes because he can. Last Friday, our nation was in peril. If you keep wasting taxpayer money, our city can crash. In a few months, Amaro will come back to a gospel board seeking more largess. Thank you.
All right.
That's it, Mayor. No more.
We'll go to item one with rather item two, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 21st, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing that as a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Darrell Russell, seconded by Commissioner Udebay. All those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda items 3A and 3B. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to see if we can take 3A out of consent agenda just for
All right, we'll take, is there, on the, on 3B, can we adopt? Is there any objection to adopting 3B?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving item 3B, say aye.
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 As opposed, like sign. So we'll go to item 3A, consideration possible action to approve additional funding to cover legal services costs to services rendered by, for in fiscal year 2020.
So I just real quick, I noticed there wasn't much detail, but an explanation of the 126, 88, 84 over the the budget amount. And it says, it says here for extraordinary legal services rendered by the department. But I'm confused because it says it's a result of the TPIA requests. And then the amount of time it takes to handle municipal court cases. So it is one overrunning the other, or I just question it because how much how would they deciphering the difference between the two or that combination of 126,000? And I noticed that they want to I guess gift us the 26,640. What does a 26,640 represent?
Yep. Commissioner Mayor, Commissioner, we have Rick Nalado. He's on the, he's on the line here. There he is. Ricky, you want to touch on that? And then I can chime in as well.
Sure. So Commissioner, even though we work with a round number of budget throughout the course of the year, we keep track through our internal timekeeping and billing system of all the areas in the city that we do legal work. Some of that is by department and some of that is by subject matter area. So we're able to keep track of where our time goes and where the, where the, where the costs go. And so we've been doing that for the last three years, and we kind of have a sense of, you know, what kind of whether the bands are, where the 126 that you see there, we are measuring that in fiscal year 2020 against similar costs, similar categories of legal service in prior years. And so we identified that the extraordinary level of services and the costs were identifiable to three primary areas. One was the municipal court was real high because the docket handling became more we weren't able to appear in court like we usually did, have people come into court and handle the dockets. We had to make adjustments to the way the dockets were being handled. We moved over to a virtual setting and it involved a lot more clerical and attorney work online, getting the paperwork back and forth, scheduling the hearings. And so there was just a lot more time involved in handling the docket. We did consider not having the dockets for a little while there in the, in the summer, but really it was not a good approach because the cases keep piling up. And so we worked with the court and we came up with procedures, but they're just more tedious and time consuming. So there was, there was some additional increase in costs associated with municipal court. The other thing we keep track of is Public Information Act requests. Ordinarily, the bulk of that work is handled by Mr. Serna's staff. They don't call us unless they think there's a, they feel that there's a legal issue or legal question. So a lot of that work is handled by administration. The staff is, you know, really good at knowing what is public and what isn't, but they have a pretty good sense of when there's legal questions. And there too, we had an increase in an extraordinary number of public, Texas Public Information Act requests, or sometimes they're called PIRs, Public Information Requests, that came through that were referred to our office for handling. And so the amount of staff time and attorney time in identifying documents, procuring the documents, redacting the documents, packaging the documents for transmission to the Attorney General's Office for their legal review, which is a requirement of the statute. Those, those efforts and hours went up significantly this year from prior years. We had a lot more of that kind of work. And then finally, in the, the third category that we had is we're, we're seeing another lawsuit that went to, came in, we forwarded it to the municipal league for, for coverage and defense coverage. And somewhat to my surprise, a decline coverage on that case. It involves multifaceted issues. It's a challenge to the city's sign ordinance and the constitutionality of the sign ordinance. It has associated with it several pending municipal court citations which are, have been thrown in question because of the constitutional challenge. But so it's a complicated case, but the risk pool declined coverage on that case. They had, they said it doesn't fall within the city's coverage document. So that means that we, we had to handle that ourselves. And in addition, we had to go to outside counsel. So the costs there, you know, have also included some of the costs with having to bring in outside attorney, which is the added grand term, because we're involved in the prosecution side of it. So it creates some potential conflicts or inconsistencies in us handling the lawsuit as well as handling the prosecutions. In addition to that, we're looking at the ordinance itself and whether or not there's any changes there. So those are the three areas where, where this came up. I have all the reports on this. I've compared it against prior years. That's where that, those revenues came from. And, and so in looking at it, I, I had told Mr. Serna that on the muni court, you know, we would write off one of those months and requested that, that we get paid on the balance. So it's not an adjustment to our budget. It's just a cost overrun which, when we negotiated that budget, you know, last in, in 2019, I think the last thing on our minds and probably anybody's mind was that we were going to be going into a pandemic mode in March of, of 2020. So, you know, the budget certainly did not anticipate those costs.
So the, so you're saying in one month, we, we incurred an additional on top of your budget, 26,000 in the municipal court system?
No, the, the, we, we, in order, in addition to keeping track of the different departments and the different subject matter areas, we submit a monthly billing statement. Okay. And the billing statement is actually a bundle of statements that identifies each area that we're working in. So the municipal court costs had been running about between 12,000 to 15,000, sometimes 16,000 a month. That's with legal support staff and prosecutors. Over the, over the summer, those amounts started rising and in, in August, they capped out at 26,000. And then in September, they dropped a little bit to 23. And I believe in October, which is the new, the new fiscal year, they dropped a little more, and we're thinking they're going to drop a little more because we're getting a handle now on how to handle those dockets. But I was actually surprised to see, you know, the jump from 15, you know, up to, to 25, 26. And, and a lot of that is just making the adjustments and dealing with, with, with the dockets virtually. And the increased amount of electronic communications that had to happen in dealing with the defendants. So we were able to keep up with the docket, but it just involved a lot more time. A lot of that time is, is actually, I mean, some of it is obviously prosecutorial time, but a lot of it is, is legal support staff time. But we use legal assistance to, to help handle a lot of the paperwork.
So when you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The individuals have to be approved to use the court's N code system, which is a secure system for handling the citations and the caseload. So it does take specialized access and training.
But, and you're saying the 126 plus, you're, you're comparing, you're taking that total and comparing it to prior years? Or are you going by what you all actually ran over this year or this fiscal year?
I'm comparing it to, to prior years. The 126 is over from prior year. In prior years, our budget has been roughly 500 and
40,000.
1,000 ever since we started. It's just been a little bit over half a million. In prior years, we have come in either at budget or slightly under budget. I think the first year we went over budget by like about 20,000 maybe. But that was, that was kind of when we were setting things up and we were in a learning curve about how to, how to deliver the services. But after that, we came in on budget or under slightly under budget. So we were hitting our mark and we were actually you know, measuring this and looking at it month to month. We were on track to be on budget this year. And then March happened and June and July, and then that's when we, we started to see the increases over the summer. So by the end of the budget year, we had gone over. In August, we started to realize that we were going to be over budget.
But by, so what are we over right now or as of today? Do you know, Dan?
You're over by 100.
Well, it's 126,000 and what Rick and I talked about is he's willing to write off the month of August for the court cost, which is total, total of 26,640.50. So the amount that we're trying to change on the, on last year's budget, it's not for the current year's budget, we started in October, it's for last year's budget, is 100,243.50. That's the amount of overruns with the writing off of the 26,640. So the total amount is in, in the executive summary. If the city council approves 100,243.50, the overall budget for legal would be for last year would be 614,774.50. And that's with Rick and then Navarro writing off the month of August.
For muni court?
For municipal court.
Yeah, everything else.
Does anybody have any other questions? All right. If there aren't any other questions, is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, may I have, may I ask a quick question? And this is an opinion on the, on the commissioners. I appreciate the attorney trying to write that off, but isn't the right thing to do is to pay him for his time? And, and, and make sure that he gets paid. I would much rather do that and look forward to the future to see how we can. Again, there's always an adjustment period, but how can we limit that or put something in place for the future so it doesn't have an overrun? But I'm not sure I'm too comfortable with making him write off, you know, $30,000 of his work.
I already wrote it off, so I mean, it's, it's gone. I've already made the adjustment internally, you know, I mean.
So, so Commissioner, I know Rick appreciates that, and but he's already made the adjustment internally within his system. He and I already talked about this. And I think he's fine with the $100,000. And we do have the, the year-end savings to cover the overage for last fiscal year. And we are monitoring it for this fiscal year as well.
Okay. So yeah, my, my concern is going forward and, and how we operate that. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Any, any other questions? And is there a motion to adopt the, the recommendation, the staff?
I'm over.
We have a second, Commissioner Leal. All those, any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hand?
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. All right, motion carries. Item, is Commissioner Gus Rees still with us?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I am here and I, I read you loud and clear.
All right. Well, we're going to go to item, we're going to take item 13 out of order. We appreciate you being here with us tonight, Commissioner, and we want to go to item 13, which item that you have a special interest in and have been instrumental in helping us get to this point with, and that's the consideration of possible action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen and Cameron County to collaborate in the road reconstruction of Garrett Road between Stewart Place Road to Palm Court. Carlos?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Good afternoon. Mayor Commissioners, the reconstruction of Garrett Road is part of the street improvement project. The current listing for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, the project will provide for the widening of the road. Again, like you mentioned, from Stewart Place to Palm Court Drive. The pavement will be widened to 24 to 33 feet, 33 feet at the intersections to allow for a left turn lane. Real quick, I just want to show you the cross section of the roadway itself at the intersections. The, the project length is approximately 1.8 miles, 9,100 linear feet. The reason behind the interlocal is that the center line of the right away is in many cases the boundary line for the city limits. And so the, we've approached and we've been in discussions with Commissioner Gus Rees and members of the Cameron County. And we've drafted an interlocal which the Cameron County Commissioners Court has considered and approved back on December the 8th. The project cost is estimated to be, at this point, again, emphasis on the cost estimate, $1,015,000. I know that the, there's a correction from one million, fifteen thousand, uh, dollars. I know that the, uh, there's a correction from the, uh, uh, summary on your, uh, agenda item. The agenda item listed eight hundred and fifty two thousand, uh, but the, the correct amount is one million, fifteen thousand. And that's the amount that the Cameron County Commissioners Court has considered. The, uh, interlocal calls for a fifty six, forty four split. And the reason behind that is that there are certain sections in the roadway that are hundred percent within the city limits of, of Harlingen. Um, the, uh, project will be designed in-house by our engineering department, uh, city engineer. And with the, uh, bidding and construction management will also would be, uh, done in-house. Uh, at this point, uh, uh, staff is recommending, uh, approval of the interlocal agreement.
I also wanna point out, Mayor Commissioners, that we did budget, uh, our portion of funding for this project and the current year's budget.
Right, uh, is there a mo- is there a motion to, uh, approve the interlocal agreement?
I'll move. Second.
Your motion, my, uh, Commissioner Lial, seconded by Commissioner Delarosa. Is any, any discussion?
Just, just. Mayor, I, I just like to thank, uh, the Commissioner, uh, Reese for, uh, his help in this project. I remember, uh, far back when, when, uh, Victor started working on that project in his district. And it's just really, uh, uh, great for the, the Cameron County to come and, and to help out and partnership up with that, with that, uh, much needed improvement.
So, and, and that's a real ditto. I mean, I just wanna thank Gus for allowing us the opportunity to be able to partner up and get this street, uh, re- redone. I just have a real quick question, Carlos. Uh, we're gonna be going at, you said twenty four then to thirty three. The current, uh, part of, of Garrett that's within the city limits is already at that twenty four. Is that not correct on the opposite side, on the east side of, uh, Palm Court?
Uh, yes, sir, it's at twenty, uh, actually, it's at twenty two to twenty four feet, uh, between Dixon Land and Palm Court.
So anybody driving wanted to understand how wide it really is, they can travel that section and they'll know how much wider the, uh, the new section is gonna be.
Correct.
Thank you, Gus.
All right, Commissioner Reese is a, uh, is our, uh, county commissioner, is a former member of this body. Would you like to, uh, say anything?
I'm absolutely, absolutely, Mayor. Thank y'all. Uh, as y'all know, I'm Gus Reese, your county commissioner in this area. Um, I wanna thank the mayor and the commission for allowing me to be here once again in this different capacity. I know Commissioner Lial and I have been discussing this project for probably a couple of years. And now it has come to fruition. The Cameron County judge is very excited about this project because not only is it gonna help drainage, it's gonna help the road conditions, it's gonna help public safety in the area. And, uh, on our portion, at least, on the, the monies coming from the county side, uh, it is at no cost to the Cameron County taxpayer as we were able to receive this money, these monies through a road use agreement that the county was able to negotiate on a, on a different project. So, uh, this is a win-win project for both the city of Harlingen and the Cameron County residents. And so, uh, this project is going to be able to provide a good avenue for people that go to Stewart Place Elementary, Bella, uh, Middle School and Harlingen South. So Mayor and Commissioners, thank y'all for your consideration and, uh, we look forward to working together on future projects.
All right, well, Commissioner, I just wanna express our, my appreciation as well to you and the entire, and to the county judge and to the Commissioners Court, uh, for, uh, working together, partnering with us on this, uh, important project. And thank you to Commissioner Lial for championing this on, on our side and the staff for getting us to this point. Uh, it's an important project and, uh, this goes to show that we really can get a lot done when we work together and, uh, and we're doing that. And there are lots more things we can work together on Arthur, Commissioner Reese. So we're gonna continue to do that. All right, any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, uh, so, uh, any other, uh, of those opposed say aye. The mo- motion carries unanimously. So again, Commissioner Reese and, and, uh, everybody here, thank you for get, uh, getting this project off the ground.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you to your city manager, Dan Senna. Thank you.
All right, so we go back up to the top of the agenda, which is item four, presentation of the finance director regarding the city of Harlingen's, financial, uh, condition for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty, unaudited.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners and staff. Uh, I'd like to, since it's been a while since I presented financial information, I'd like to do a recap of, uh, the prior year, uh, financial report, uh, and, uh, the first two months of this year. So I'd like to start with, um, October, November of the current year.
You wanna share your screen, Robert?
Yes, sir. So I'd like to start with the revenue and expenditure, uh, comparisons to budget. I've laid out, uh, the first two months of the year for October and November a- as a comparison. So at the end of November, we should be at seventeen percent of our budget lapsed. So on the right-hand side, we see that for the most part, we're right at that budget and the total, we're at fifteen point three seven percent. Uh, I'd like to go one by one, uh, for the fourteen point seven for property taxes. For the beginning of the year, we don't collect that many property taxes until po- like around December, January and February. Those are our heavy tax collection months. For sales tax, for the months of October, we did, we did pretty good on the collections for October. We did about five point eight, nine percent, and for November, we did sixteen point two, seven percent. So, so this percentage is up a little bit. Franchise tax is not, not quite at the seventeen percent because some of the franchise tax collections, uh, we do quarterly, uh, such as Spectrum or E P. Uh, other taxes we collect during the year, those include like bingo and, um, those are bingo and liquor taxes. Um, for licenses and permits, though, that, that line item, we've exceeded the seventeen percent by twenty one percent. Uh, or we're at twenty one percent, uh, and that's due to sewer taps and, and business permits. So those have been up about twenty one percent and twenty nine percent respectively. Um, municipal court, that's down because we, we are not having face-to-face, uh, courts right now. We're only doing virtual courts, so that's, that's a, a, a little bit more tedious and we, we don't collect that much revenue on there. Uh, fines of perpetrators and of other, that's slightly up. That's library and, and residential alarm calls. Uh, charges for services are slightly down, miscellaneous is down and other financial, financing sources is slightly down. But in total, for the, for the months of October and November in revenues are about at fifteen point three seven percent. And we move on to the expenditures for October and November. We see that we're almost on point at the seventeen percent, at the majority of these line items. We are a little bit down on, on, uh, personnel and, and benefits. Uh, supplies in general, we're a little bit down, but for, for the most part, we're services, general, services, charges, maintenance. Uh, those are, those are right on point. Uh, for improvement streets, this is at ninety nine point nine percent. But this is for a, a, a crack seater that we rent for three months at the beginning of the year and then, and then that project is over. We do have some transfers that we did at the beginning of the year. Uh, that's where we, uh, already taken up that budget. So those are the, the first two months of this year. I'd like to do a, a recap of last year since we are going through our audit and we have, do have preliminary numbers. These are all of the, the funds of the city, including the general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds and internal service funds. So we ba- began the year with fifty one million, two hundred eleven thousand, uh, twenty one thousand, twenty one million, seven hundred eighty nine thousand is in the general fund. We have revenues of fifty six million, expenditures of fifty one million. And we ended the year with, um, an increase of five million, which is twenty five million, nine fifty three at year-end fund balance. So this balance does include, uh, funding for the CARES Act. If you remember, we got approximately three point seven million dollars in CARES funding. And the way we spent it, uh, was in twenty twenty, so even though our reimbursements were in, um, in October, November of this year, uh, uh, we did have to accrue those into the last year. So, so that increased our fund balance because of this, uh, this CARES Act reimbursement. Special revenues went from seven point nine million to eleven million, so that was a three million increase. We have fifteen point eight million in revenues, twelve point seven in expenditures. Enter- enterprise funds went from, uh, twelve point nine million to thirteen million. That was not much of a change there. Internal, internal service funds, um, went from nine, nine point four million to nine point one million. That was a, a small decrease. I did a comparison of, of last year's budgeted revenues to the actual revenues compared to budget. And, and so, uh, these are the percent of budget that we used up in the previous year. And I also included a column for twenty nineteen for comparison. So the six, six million, eight hundred sixty one thousand increase, of course, um, that, that includes the three million, uh, that was not budgeted, uh, because we only budgeted seven hundred fifty one thousand, uh, for the twenty percent advance of the coronavirus relief funds. Um, the way the coronavirus relief reimbursements were going at, at, towards the end of the year, we were not able to do a budget amendment, uh, at, or a budget amendment at the end of the year to, uh, to budget for this three point six million because we weren't sure if we were gonna realize that revenue, um, you know, by the end of the year. So we did end up getting it in, in October, November, and accounting standards require that we, we report that back. So, so a lot of that increase is due to the coronavirus relief funding that we have received. For personnel services, uh, there's a budget to actual comparison. Uh, we're, we were at about ninety six point nine eight percent. We were just below our budget. And I also included a twenty nineteen for comparison. This is a slide that compares all of the, the special revenue funds, seven point nine million, uh, beginning fund balance and ending with eleven, uh, million forty one. And this is a detail of all of the, uh, special revenue funds. These are the enterprise funds, which include the municipal auditorium, sanitation fund, arts and heritage museum, municipal golf course. And we went from twelve point nine million beginning fund balance to thirteen point one million. Our internal service funds, which include the motor vehicle warehouse and the health insurance. The beginning fund balance was nine million, four hundred seventy four thousand, and we ended with nine million, one hundred ninety one thousand. And that's, that's just a brief recap. We are still going through our audit process. Uh, but, but we are in the process of preparing the, the cap for the comprehensive annual financial report in-house, um, to be audited by, by external auditors.
So for the first two months of the year, Mayor Commissioners, we're slightly under the seventeen percent where we should be. But we're also slightly under on expenditures, uh, in comparison. So they're right in line with each other, uh, and the, the payments on property taxes, those typically start coming in towards the end of December, January and February. So that's when we'll get the bulk of that. That number will remain low until that time. But, uh, you know, uh, we don't, we don't have any concerns at this point. Uh, and we can ta- continue to monitor the sales tax reports every month, so.
Thank you, Dan, and, and yes, we are, we are on point with our budget and, and, uh, w- we are grateful that we are, we are receiving our, our coronavirus relief, uh, reimbursement, so. And that's, that, that concludes the financial report.
And this is just a, a report, but does anybody have any questions? Okay. And if, and if there are no questions, I'm gonna go on to the next item, uh, which is item number five, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one.
Again, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Uh, this budget amendment allocates funds for prior fiscal year for unspent encumbrances, awards, grants and other revenues and expenditures. And, uh, not including the, in the current fiscal year that was, um, that was originally approved. So for, for this budget, uh, the total increase in, in revenues is five million, four hundred eighty one thousand, four hundred thirty three. And we are, uh, uh, proposing expenditure increases of eight million, seven hundred forty five thousand, three oh eight. And I can go into some of the detail that's on the executive summary. For the general fund, I'll begin with the general fund, revenues have increased for, by one million, three hundred forty nine thousand, three ninety four, which is, uh, for a Texas Water Development Board Federal Infrastructure Fund grant that was awarded last week and that covers part of our match for a drainage project. Uh, for our, for our expenditures, in the general fund, expenditures increased three million, fifty six, two eighty, which include incumbents rollovers. These expenditures also, uh, include an additional, uh, position that was, that is proposed to be added in the engineering department. It is a deputy engineer that is a, a professional engineer. The deputy engineer will assist the engineer in reviewing residential and commercial developments and designing in-house projects. This amount includes salary, fringe benefits, land development, tracking, tracking software and office equipment for a total of two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred seventy five. Expenditures also include six hundred and fifty thousand for a, uh, a, a fire pumper truck, Pierce fifteen hundred GPM fire pumper truck. Two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, proposed to increase the, uh, Harlingen hardship program that is administered through the Loews and Fishes, um, uh, program.
Uh, Rob- Robert, if I can, on, on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, Mayor Commissioners, the, uh, the Harlingen hardship program administered by Loews and Fishes, they are down to about ten thousand dollars of the initial allocation. And with COVID continuing on publicly through the summer, we thought it'd be best to go ahead and increase the allocation for that program because we feel that the need obviously is there. And so we wanna make sure that we have an allocation assigned to that program as we continue to move forward.
The expenditures als- thank you, Dan. The expenditures also include a hundred fifty thousand for, uh, transfers to the auditorium for use of the auditorium during our alternate care site. Uh, that's, that's about half of, of the amount that, that it costs them to run it. Uh, six hundred and twenty three thousand, uh, which is a ten percent match for flood protection planning study. And that's a T W, uh, Texas Water Development Board, um, um, federal infrastructure fund, ten percent, ninety percent, ten percent grant.
I promise I won't keep it to you, Robert, but on this one, Mayor, so we're, we are on the agenda for tomorrow for the Texas Water Development Board for consideration to award a six point two million dollar grant for a regional study, and that is a grant that five formed by the city of Harlingen. We were, we will be in charge of that grant study. Now, the six hundred and twenty three thousand, seven hundred, that is the, the match for that grant. So we're, we're trying to allocate the funds for that already. But I will tell you this, that Carlos has done a fantastic job of reaching out to neighboring communities to, uh, to break down by square mile a cost share, uh, per city, by city. And they've all responded very positively, so we will be bringing forth some interlocal agreements with neighboring communities. So we can possibly bring that, that dollar amount down to just over three hundred thousand dollars on the city side. And that would be for a six million dollar regional study.
For flood plan, for flood planning.
For flood planning, yes, sir.
Thank you, Dan. We also have additional requests for, um, some grant tracking software, a police unit that was damaged while on duty. Uh, uh, for street maintenance, we, we're, we're requesting a core, core drill machine and, and improvements to the Humane Society's parking lot. That, that includes for the, for the general fund. For the hotel motel fund, we're, we're, uh, proposing a transfer of five hundred eighty six thousand, uh, nineteen dollars for the Harlingen community, uh, working capital, the Harlingen Convention Center working capital. For the grant awards, revenues increased by three million, three hundred sixty seven thousand. And that includes grant rollovers of a hundred fifty eight thousand for bulletproof vests, uh, department, uh, various grants, Texas Parks and Wildlife, Valley Baptist Legacy, Aurora Trail. Uh, one million, three hundred forty nine to, to do the transfer for the eighty percent match. Six hundred twenty three thousand for the flood protection plan study and one million, two hundred thirty six. And one minute two hundred thirty six thousand in in grant rollovers, which you can uh tag grant Homeland Security. For its expenditures, we we are proposing three million five hundred forty two thousand, which are for the exact same uh grant programs. We also have the convention center uh transfer of five eighty six. And encumbrance rollovers in the infrastructure fund of one million four hundred and three thousand. Revenues in the municipal auditorium increased by a hundred fifty thousand for the alternate care site. Expenses by a thousand two hundred thirty six, sanitation by a hundred and three thousand for incumbent rollovers. The Hardinge Arts Museum, uh we are including a budget amendment for the uh Charles V Feldman sponsorship. In Motor Vehicle Warehouse, twenty three thousand for encumbrance rollovers and the Launcey Home Memorial Library. Three hundred and seventy eight thousand in in revenue and encumbrance rollovers. So that includes the presentation for budget amendments.
Anybody have a question? Robert?
Uh Dan, I I'm just I'm just happy to see that we're adding to our budget and not having to cut items in our budget during this time. So I like the motion for an approval.
All right, we need, I think uh the city attorney needs to read the caption.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, good.
In ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October first, twenty twenty. Through September thirtieth, twenty twenty one, total budget revenues will increase to eighty three million four hundred ninety six. Thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars and total budget expenditures will increase to eighty eight. Million six hundred thirty seven thousand seven hundred sixty five respectively. Providing for publication of caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Now, now Commissioner Uribe.
It's a motion for an approval.
Second, yeah, Frank got it.
Yeah, Frank had it.
And Commissioner wanted uh signaled that. Any discussion? Just like to point out that on these revenue on on the on this amendment, uh a large uh. Part of the uh increased expenditures have are a direct result of increased revenues from. Grant funding received uh for uh projects such as the trail, uh drainage projects. Uh and the other things that were mentioned there uh by Robert. And so that's a really, really important. Aspect of this, and and I want to congratulate the staff. Uh for uh making those opportunities happen for us. To get that increased funding through grant revenue, which we're now able to leverage into these projects. So that's a that's an important thing. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like signed, motion carries. Uh number six. Is a presentation by the Finance Director regarding the CARES Act funding status report. Robert?
Thank you, mayor. This will be a a brief presentation of of the status of our uh coronavirus relief funding. I'll share the screen. So as you remember, um our total allocation for the coronavirus relief was three million seven hundred fifty eight oh forty. Um to date, I'm happy to report that we have actually been paid three million two hundred ninety four thousand four hundred forty six thousand of that allocation. So we're still we're still pending two reimbursements, that total four hundred sixty three thousand. But we, starting in October, November, we did start receiving the reimbursements rather quickly. So we are almost at uh one hundred percent of receiving those funds. So of the three million seven hundred fifty eight thousand, we received three million two hundred ninety four. Uh these are the covered expenditures that were utilized to uh reach compliance to be able to get these this funding. And this this information is as of as of today, I updated and 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 changed out the PowerPoint.
All right. Very. Very good. Does anybody have any questions for Robert on this? Again, uh job well done on making sure that we receive the full amount of our allocation. And 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 being able to to track it as as we are today.
Thank you, mayor.
Item seven is a presentation and possible action on a request. From Mrs. Jennifer Gonzalez to create a mural on a city building wall or park. To remember members of the community who lost their fight to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
There new mayor commissioners, uh let's see if uh Ms. Jennifer Gonzalez is online already. She's she's someone that has a presentation.
Yes, sir. I'm here. Um I am trying to share or start my video.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. I apologize about that. Hi, so um first off, I'd like to take this time to introduce myself. Uh my name is Jennifer Gonzalez, and um I did lose my father to COVID on August the second. Um ever since then, I have been along with others that are here with us today. Um pretty much on an adventure on a quest to try and. Um honor their lives and just tell a little bit of their stories as far as who they are and the families and the lives that they left behind. So um I did uh create a PowerPoint presentation. If you don't mind, uh I can go ahead and share that with you guys.
Okay, please do. Thank you.
Okay, so this PowerPoint is called uh my COVID experience by me, Jennifer Gonzalez. Now, on August second, I lost my father to COVID. My father was not only my father, but as well my best friend. Now, people like my dad whom lost their lives to COVID are known as just another COVID number, but to me, I feel that this is wrong. They did have real lives, and they leave behind real families who are still with us today, grieving and confused every day. A few things I'd like to share with you about my father is that he was not, he was not perfect, as many of us are not. But what my father did teach me was when life knocks you down, you get back up again. My father had many obstacles in his life that he needed to overcome before he was able to reach a place. Of peace and serenity within himself, but I am happy to know that he accomplished just that. My father was a prayer warrior at his church and devoted his every moment for the last two years of his life to fulfilling the Lord's wishes. At times, I don't understand why all of this is happening to us and my family, but then I think, are we ever really meant to understand fate? Here are a couple of pictures of my dad, and I just wanted to share that, you know, my dad was always with a smile on his face, and he was always happy to be with his grandchildren. Um they created a nickname. They called him Pops, as did all of the boys within our community here in youth sports. I wanted to share this here. Um this here that you see is a pair of boxing trunks worn by a boy named Reggie. Uh so Reggie is a young up up and coming boxer here in our community uh who leads a a promising future in boxing. Uh he looked to my father for guidance before each fight. So basically, every before every fight, um he would call my dad. And my dad would lead him in prayer and, you know, wish him the best. So. With these shorts, what you see there, it's a little tribute that he paid to my father, David Gonzalez Senior. Unfortunately, we do feel that this terrible experience was preventable. Here I share with you a a chart. This was actually created not by myself, but by um um an individual that's on today, Rose Van Hell.
It's Gonzalez.
Yes. Yes, sir.
This is uh this is Mayor Boswell. And I'll I'll have to turn it for some guidance here, but uh the. Topic that we're on, because we have rules about what we can discuss, the topic that we're on is uh. About a park proposal. Uh a memorial to honor those who have died. We going too far away from. Where you want to uh where you want to put the uh the memorial and what you want the memorial to consist of. Violating the Open Meetings Act because that's not, these other things are not what's on the agenda. Uh is that right, uh coun- council?
It, you you know, a little, a little background is fine to relay the artist's. I guess motivations behind her mural or her artwork. Um but I I do think, yeah, we should probably circle back and and. Come to focus on on the agenda item at hand. You know, a little backstory for some motivation and uh some reason behind what's happening. Uh but we should probably go ahead and and start focusing on on the artwork itself.
Um well, you see, that's the thing is that our purpose is to, you know, prove a point as to why they deserve the mural, and that's what I thought. That's what I believe that this was. That was what our intentions were, and that's what I believe that we were coming into this meeting for. So I I'm just.
Right. And 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 that's.
Yeah, so I don't, I think we're all very familiar with uh. The tragedy that has beset all of us here, and we're certainly sorry for your personal loss. Many of us have experienced personal losses as a result of uh COVID nineteen. So I we're certainly. Uh I think interested in hearing what your proposal is about uh the placement of the memorial and what it would consist of.
What we've looked into is um the Liberty Gardens Park to have, I did submit. Uh there with the proposal, the initial proposal, there are some pictures of uh possible possibilities as far as um what I've seen. Uh that we can have some plaques made as, you know, remembrance, also benches. Um I did submit the pictures there in the proposal itself.
Gabe, uh can you chime in here, Gabe or Josh?
Yes, uh.
What we had, uh excuse me, Joshua, we had talked about was either having a mural or benches uh at our various parks. And I think what, if we are gonna have a mural uh set someplace, we would need to see some sort of mockup of the mural, what it's gonna look like before, so. That's one option, but what we would prefer is if we could give you options on a type of bench that perhaps we could. Have at our park uh with somebody's nameplate that was donated to us and have that placed throughout the park in memory of any of. Victims of COVID. So we think that those might be two options that the city can pursue, but. Uh I think at this point, we just want to present a concept and not really have any action. Just get some guidance from the commission as to what. Uh we should pursue with this particular individual.
Yeah, I I think the idea of of possibly donating benches that could be placed throughout our walking trails. With memorial plaques placed on them that can be donated by individual families to the city. The city could. Create the foundations to set the benches on around the trails. Uh that is, I think, a very good option. Uh because it 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 gets people outdoors, and also the benches could be concrete benches. That could last a very long time and be there for in the future. Uh that's, we could bring back a couple of options for the city council. That's what uh my intent was, was to bring back options for the city commission's consideration. With staff, uh staff will go back and work with Ms. Gonzalez to develop those options and bring it back for a formal consideration.
Yes, in my head, uh when we discussed the the project was, we talked about a a mural to portray. The loss of the COVID uh patients, and also we talked about possible stone steppers at parks or benches as well. This is commemorate the loss of the loved ones that they they were lost during this pandemic, and that was the intent of this discussion, so we can continue. Uh researching the the several options available to to the family members that they're willing to to donate for this project.
Could we possibly have a combination of both the mural and a a bench? I I saw the the pictures that were submitted on the agenda packet, and they show one mural and then. Examples, and the first thing that came to my mind was Liberty Gardens and the serenity of that place. But I like Dan's also maybe putting some benches along the walking trail where. Uh I don't think we have to be limited to one area, maybe the mural or or the focus in in one area, but uh memorializing this, you know.
Yes, sir. And that's what we're we're seeking guidance at this point.
Yes, sir. Uh that's really what I'm I'm here looking for is for guidance and it because we we definitely have. You know, the the individuals that are wanting to see this happen and go forward. And, you know, I I I do apologize. I was looking to portray those lives, but obviously, we all understand the severity of it. And we still have individuals out there that are that are still hurting. We would we would love to see some sort of action take place in honoring those lives that were lost. Through murals and and things that 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 were discussed here with benches and and permanent memorial locations.
I I certainly think this is a wonderful idea, and I'm so glad that you have brought this uh to us. And I I'm uh I didn't mean to 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 cut you off, uh I I just wanted to. Assure you that I think we all understand the gravity of uh of of what has beset us and the and the tragic loss. That so many of our families uh and our loved ones have experienced uh during these last nine months. So uh i- i- is there anyone here that objects to? Can continue, having the staff continue to work on uh a specific proposal. I think that's what the staff is asking for. Tonight is just sort of the green light to move forward with uh with something that they could bring back to us. For final approval. Is is everybody uh on board with that? Okay, I'm not hearing any objections to it, then I, uh Ms. Gonzalez, again, I want to express my deep appreciation to you and. Those of you, uh those who who you are working with uh to bring this to our attention, uh to to bring this idea. I think. You know, this is an event that um that uh happens about uh every one hundred years, and so it's certainly. Uh an extraordinary event uh which should be memorialized and and certainly the folks that that uh. Have been touched by it uh would have an opportunity to do something. So so we will uh continue to work uh with you, and the staff will reach back out. And and maybe you all could meet and uh and develop some concrete uh a concrete proposal to bring back. To the commission for approv- approval. Is that okay with you, Ms. Gonzalez?
Uh yes, sir. So are you looking for exact uh uh exact numbers that? That way I know that I'm absolutely prepared for the next meeting, because what we're looking for is benches, the name plaques, and I did. Uh see here Liberty Gardens, that that would be a perfect location for it. As far as a mural, I I don't know. I've gone around the town. I've looked, but to say that I see anything that that would be. Um you know, on the level that, you know, that we were impacted by this COVID experience, I I don't see that. So I need it. I need some advice on on where to go and where to start with this.
Well, so we'll have Mr. Gonzalez, uh Gabriel Gonzalez, uh sit down and we'll meet with you and possibly. Mr. Ramirez and uh as a start, and 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 we'll and they'll help you kind of formulate. Uh a direction uh for this, and 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 it could be several options. And it doesn't, as I think Commissioner Lyles said, not have to necessarily be one thing, but we'll we'll start that process with you, and we'll bring that back. Uh with something that's a little uh, I think the commission is definitely interested. So so that's what we'll do uh and and uh Gabriel Gonzalez will get get with you soon. Okay?
All right, we definitely appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Item seven, uh presentation of possible action, I mean, item eight, consideration possible action. consideration, possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending chapter 36 of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing rules for Hugh Ramsey Nature Park and the Thicket.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor, City Commission. Um, we're bringing this to you all. Um, really the main purpose, uh, original purpose was to change the hours of operation for Hugh Ramsey. Um, we didn't have any ordinance for the thicket, so we wanted to add that or include it in this amendment. Um, but since when we're working on the, uh, changes, we wanted to, um, add, uh, some other additional, uh, amendments or additions to it, which is restricting people from harassing the wildlife, removing any vegetation from the site, uh, restricting people from having glass containers, uh, restricting the con- the consuming of alcohol. And then, of course, having motorized vehicles on the trail. Uh, we also added requiring dogs to be on a leash. Um, but we've taken this, uh, ordinance, uh, draft ordinances to the park advisory board. Uh, the board has made a recommendation also to, um, uh, to, uh, present it to y'all. Um, and, uh, staff also recommends approval of the ordinance.
All right, could we ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending chapter 36 of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances by adding division three, Hugh Ramsey Nature Park and Harlingen Thicket, providing a penalty not to exceed $200 for violation of the provisions hereof, directing the posting of signs at Ramsey Nature Park and the Thicket for notice of the provisions herein, providing for publication and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Motion to approve?
Second. And, and before we, before we vote, may I say something?
Yeah, sure. Discussion.
Yeah, I'm gonna thank you, Javier. A month or so, I got a letter from a concerned citizen about the park and about dogs and everything that Javier mentioned. So I just want to say thank you for following up and putting teeth, uh, into this to, um, help that citizen and all of us. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any, uh, any other discussion? And all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to execute a renewal service agreement with the University of Texas Science Center in Houston to implement the Tous Saludes Secuentas program aimed to promote healthy lifestyles and health-changing lifestyle courses for city residents and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Yes, Mayor, uh, thank you. Um, we had, um, I had asked Amanda, and I hope she sent that out, uh, it was a program highlights, um, for the Tous Saludes Secuentas. Um, and it shows the stats of, from last year. And, uh, like everything else, of course, we, we were hit with the COVID. And so we had to modify our program, um, a little bit, and we had a lot of our, our classes that were virtual. Um, but with this one here, this contract here, um, we've had contracts or a contract with the UT, um, Health Science Center at Houston since 2013, uh, to implement the Tous Saludes Secuentas program for residents. Uh, the contract requires us to hire community health worker through the grant funds. Um, and so the priority and goals, uh, uh, this program is evidence-based prevention and intervention projects, uh, chronic disease prevention and control. Um, and it's focused on uns- un, uh, this unserved, uh, population. Um, and our community health worker manages exercise classes, walking groups, nutrition, education opportunities, uh, health monitoring and follow-ups. Uh, the grant's for $60,000 and it's for 12 months. Um, and, uh, staff recommends approval. I know that Dr. Reininger, I think she's still present on the meeting. Um, in case y'all have any questions from her or if she wants to add anything to, um, to my presentation.
Dr. Reiniger, welcome. We're like glad to have you here. If there's anything you'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will be brief. Um, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Good to, good to be with you. Um, the, you know, we have been in this partnership quite a while. This funding comes from the state to UT. And then we contract with you and, um, a few other communities to implement this program in a coordinated way. Um, as Mr. Mendez, uh, said, and I, and I do want to thank Mr. Mendez and Betsy Flores and Christina Mendiola, our community health worker, they've really done, um, a great job and we're very thankful for the partnership. And one of the things that's exciting about this year, the, the, the structure of, of the, um, program is, is going to be modified a little bit in this future, um, contract that we're asking you to approve tonight. But last year's metrics, despite the fact that we had, um, COVID-19, uh, you know, make us change programming, moving from in-person to everything online. And this includes exercise classes, 185 free exercise classes around the region, um, a lot of education, et cetera. We met our metrics, we exceeded our metrics. We see people, um, still living healthy lives, losing weight, um, ma- being physically active. So despite the fact that there was a transition, we used it as a way to create innovation and we have even more access to free services. So want to thank you for being a partner on that. Um, we do have the contract, uh, ready for signature now. So it's, you know, if you approve tonight, we are ready to move forward with you yet again, and we're looking forward to 2021.
Mayor, I'd like to motion for an approval.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Yeah, I'd like to, uh, express our appreciation, Dr. Reiniger, for the partnership, uh, and working together on this interlocal, which really, I believe, has a huge impact on the hell of our community and, and, uh, we appreciate your leadership and partnership on this. So with that, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, thank you so much. Item ten, consideration and possible action to approve the fire services agreement with Cameron County Emergency Services District Number One for fiscal year 2020, 21 and authorize mayor to sign the agreement.
Mayor, Commissioner, we have our new fire chief, Rafael Valderas, uh, and he'll, he'll make the presentation. Chief, are you on? There you are.
On your line, if you are.
Good evening. Good evening.
Welcome, welcome aboard and welcome to your first city, Harl- Harlingen City Commission meeting.
Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, I'm honored to be here. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Uh, you have before you our annual renewal of fire services agreement between the city of Harlingen and Cameron County ESD Number One. Uh, the proposed agreement amount is for $279,069. That is an increase of about $16,328. And this is to be paid quarterly, and, uh, those payments will start, uh, in December 31st. The staff recommends approval.
Any question? I'm sorry, Commissioner Liao, did, is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
No move.
It was second by Commissioner Nalarosa. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye and ra- say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. And we're glad, glad to have you with us. Thank you. Item 11, consideration, possible action to approve an interlocal agreement between the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council and the city of Harlingen for the joint development of the Harlingen Transit Terminal. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, as you know, the city is in the process of constructing a new intermodal facility. The development council has asked us to help with the, uh, architectural design, to actually bring on an architect and oversee the construction. In order for us to do that, we have to approve this interlocal agreement. The agreement that you have in your packet, uh, was modified slightly. Uh, the city attorney has looked at the revisions and has approved them, so we're going to ask that you approve, uh, the most recent one that was approved by the city attorney. Uh, one major change though was on page three of the agreement. They had asked for $240,000 in operational costs to cover a two-year period. We were able to get that down to $150,000, so there's some cost savings to us. So with that, we're recommending approval of the agreement, uh, of interlocal with the development council.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
No move.
Second.
Our motion, uh, second by Commissioner Liao, is there any discussion or any questions? Here now, is there, uh, all those in favor, say aye and please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. This is an exciting project for the city and I'm glad to see that we're finally really, I mean, we've been working on it for a long time and now to be able to get down architectural drawings, that's exciting. All right. Item, uh, 12 is the consideration of possible action to extend the COVID-19 Financial Hardship Assistance Program and additional $250,000 for the program. Gabe?
Uh, Mayor, members of the commission, uh, city manager and the finance director touched on this briefly at, at the presentation on the CARES Act funding. As you know, we did establish a financial hardship assistance program that was funded through the CARES Act. Uh, due to federal guidelines, that program will, will actually cease on December 30th of this year. Uh, as city manager, uh, mentioned, there, there is still a need. We see a need throughout the next year, so we're asking that you allocate, uh, an initial $200,000 towards this program. Uh, with the city manager having the option to go up to an additional $50,000 and extend the program from January 1st of 2021 through June 2021. So this, uh, agreement will extend the, uh, the, the contract with Loews and Fishes and also amend the, uh, the guidelines and the, uh, program forms to carry us through, uh, June of next year. Uh, if you have to ask any questions, if you have any.
And this will not be covered by, by the CARES?
No, sir. This would be, uh, funded through the CARES Act reimbursements that we've received. But it will not be reimbursed unless there's, uh, new legislation that will allow that, but for now there isn't any, so it would be on our own.
Right. We, we could go back and, and, and recoup it if the, all the qualifications met and they extend the program?
Yes, sir. And bear, bear in mind that we did receive the $3.2 million already in CARES funds. They are accounted for in the general fund. The budget amendment that the city council approved earlier included that amount in addition to the $250,000 that we're asking for, for this program already.
Okay, so we've already accounted for.
We already accounted for it.
Got it. Got it. That's what I wanted to be clear. Okay.
Yeah, so we're good, we're good. Once, once you all vote on it, we'll be good.
Is there a motion to approve the extent?
No move.
Is your second, where's second by Commissioner Puente?
Second.
Uh, all those, any other discussion? Say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, with motion carries unanimously, uh, beauty, our city in, uh, background noise, if somebody can, uh, maybe mute their line. Thank you. All right, item, we've, uh, covered item 13, so item 14 is a consideration, possible action to accept or reject RFP 2021-01 for management services for the Harlingen Recycling Center.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Commissioners. As y'all know, on March, late March, uh, we closed the recycling center, uh, due to COVID. Uh, and, uh, we went to self-service, uh, container bins. And then sometime, or the first meeting of July, the city commission approved an action plan, uh, to seek for proposal from the private industry, uh, to manage the operations of the recycling center. Excuse me, on September 8th of this year, uh, the RFPs went out. Uh, we had some interest, about four or five people called in. We had a, a meeting to discuss answering questions. The bid opening was held on September 23rd. Unfortunately, we had no bidders at that time. Uh, we continued to ask questions to see how we could do, what is it that they were looking for, uh, how we could modify. Uh, they did, we took their feedback, uh, we removed some components that they felt wasn't in the best interest. So we went out for bids again on November 3rd. Uh, the bids were open on November 18th. We had one, uh, bidder, Corporate Waste Solutions out of KD, Texas. Uh, unfortunately, they did not meet the, the parameters that we had set. They came in with a different kind of proposal. Um, at, at this time, we feel that this proposal is not in the best interest of the city for the following reasons. The respondent requires a payment to operate the recycling center higher cost than what, uh, the sanitation had it for. Uh, the, they had initially proposed, uh, 639,603 per year. Uh, they came back with a revised after we met with them, and, and they lowered it to 469,455, which is still more what, what we used to do before. Uh, in addition, that's less of the services that we used to provide. In addition to that, they required for the city to transport any generated trash. Uh, they also required for us to, uh, they wanted to use the facility at absolutely no cost. Uh, they wanted us to be responsible for the maintenance and facility of the equipment. Uh, and they did not address how they were going to be using the revenues in the, in, in their proposal. Uh, for those reasons, we are recommending that, uh, uh, we reject the RFP submitted by management services.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nalarosa. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, rate and raise.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, the, uh, the proposal is rejected. Uh, any board appointments? Are there any board appointments?
I have none, sir.
Okay. Hearing, hearing no board appointments. Uh, that concludes our agenda for the evening. And as I should have said at the beginning of the meeting, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. And a happy, a happy new year. We'll see you next year.
I'll wait for my presents from all of y'all.
Yours is in the mail.
Words out of my mouth, Mayor.
Look for it in the mail.
Nobody gets my measurements.
All right. Everybody, be safe. Good night.
God bless everybody.